So we will move on to conductive business.
Item 6A, receive update on planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project and provide direction to staff regarding potential of Scott Street closure to vehicular traffic.
City manager.
Sure. Good afternoon to the mayor, the council, members of the public, both at home and here. My name is Javon Grogan and I'm the city manager for the city of San Bruno. Tonight's presentation will be given by Mike Cotto, the city's transportation engineer, supplemented by Public Works Director Jimmy Tan. Before we get into tonight's presentation, I want to begin by saying, we are here tonight because we are approaching the conclusion of the planning phase for a project to examine options for a grade separation project at Scott Street where it crosses the railroad tracks. Talk of this project in the city of San Bruno began back in 2005 when talk around the grade separation project that is now existing at San Bruno Avenue was being planned. Back in 2013, the city council authorized the establishment of a planning development team to begin to look into options for the grade separation at Scott Street. This project, as you'll hear tonight, is being planned in conjunction with South Linden Ave and South San Francisco. Together with Scott Street, South Linden and Scott Street represent the only two unseparated great crossings in between San Francisco until you get to Broad Street in Millbrae. Grade separations are extremely important. As you'll hear tonight from the presentations, there's a planning effort going on by Caltrain to do a long-range look at Caltrain service. We're blessed with being in an area of significant economic development, but that also comes with increased transportation, both on the roadway and along the railway. And the projections are for traffic to more than double on the Caltrain corridor. Right now, on a weekday, there are approximately 92 trains that cross San Bruno. That is projected to increase to up to 398 trains per day. Gate times are projected to increase, where approximately a third of the time that you'll see from the data, the gate will be down. And so grade separation projects are extremely important. This is a planning effort, and it is important to note that any option for a grade separation project will cost several hundreds of millions of dollars and will certainly require federal and state funding. But we are in the very early stages, and council is here tonight to talk about the direction that staff and the project development team should continue down. And so there are three options that have been put out to the community for robust input. Those three options are, and I'll repeat them, and you'll hear them in the presentation. Option A, which keeps the crossing where you have all modes of transportation at the same elevation: trains, bicycles, pedestrians, and automobile vehicles. Option B, which is the staff recommendation, closes the area to vehicular traffic but creates a separation between trains and pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And then there is option C, which keeps the intersection open to all modes of transportation, including vehicular traffic, but creates a very important grade separation between trains and all other modes: automobile, bike, and pedestrian. That option C will require significant adjustments to private property. The initial study calls for, should that option be chosen, up to 69 homes that may have a driveway impact and several homes that may have to be removed. During the initial study, it was important that the city, the city council thought that it was important for the community to hear all options. Staff is now recommending tonight that we not proceed with option C, but we instead look at option B. Option B is important because it's reflective of the increased train traffic and it helps to improve both traffic and safety. It also protects our community and it protects homes. And so the presentation you'll hear from tonight, hear tonight from staff, is really geared towards educating the community about the project, what's gone on over the last several years. And for some of the members in the community, this will be a lot of a repeat because there have been four public meetings over the last, or this is the fourth public meeting over the last 24 months on this. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mike Cotto, our traffic engineer.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. I'm Mike Cotto from Department of Public Works, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on the status of the planning study for the South Linden Avenue and Scott Street Caltrain grade separation project. Sorry, he said some stuff that I was planning to say. I'm going to move on. So the project development team for this project is work that is working on this study is comprised of representatives from the city of San Bruno, the city of South San Francisco, Caltrain, and we have some consultants on board, which would include AECOM, which is our lead technical consultant, Apex, which is our public outreach consultant, and CDM Smith, who did a traffic study or is working on finalizing a traffic study for us. Tonight, we have Daniel Kraus from Caltrain with us, as well as some other members of the team. But I mentioned Daniel specifically because he will be helping to deliver part of this presentation regarding the rail, the future of rail traffic on the corridor in the peninsula. So the agenda for the presentation, I'll start by giving you a goal for the presentation. We'll go quickly over a little bit of background, talk a little bit about the project options. Then Daniel will give his presentation on the future of the rail on the peninsula. I'm going to go over our community engagement process, and we're going to do that because that was part of our direction at the first, the last time we came to give you an update was to improve our community engagement process, and so I wanted to spend some time tonight talking about that. And then, as a result of that, we've been getting lots of feedback from the community, and so I'll also give you a rundown of the things we've been hearing from the residents of San Bruno. Then we'll give you our, formally deliver our staff recommendation to you, and myself and the other members of the team will be, you know, happy to answer questions. And then we'll be asking for your direction. So the goal for this presentation is to select an option for future study. So we'll give you the update, we'll give you our recommendation and ask for your direction on that. And let's go on. And Javon mentioned the three options, and so they're listed there. One is, A is to do no grade separation at Scott. Two, B is to do a grade separation at Scott that will be like a pedestrian and bicycle overpass or underpass, but be closed to cars. And C is to do a full grade separation that will accommodate all modes of travel, but as was mentioned, that will lead to some property impacts in the vicinity. Staff is recommending option B. This is an option that we think will solve, or allow us to address the concerns that we will have without leading to undue difficulties in the neighborhood. We are not recommending option A, which is not to build a grade separation, and that's because we feel that, as you will see later, there will be some impacts from the number of trains that are coming in the future, and not doing anything is, you know, does not seem like a good option to us. And then option C, we would not be recommending that because of the property impacts. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Daniel Kraus from Caltrain to talk about the future of rail on the peninsula. Daniel?
Great. Thank you, thank you, Mike. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for having us tonight, and the members of the public, which are here in great numbers, which is great to see. So I'm just going to talk about kind of some of the planning efforts that are going on in the Caltrain corridor that will be relevant to the, in the city of San Bruno in some way or another. And the one I'm mainly going to focus on is the Caltrain Business Plan effort that's in progress. And I'll briefly touch on city-led grade separation efforts. There's several more in addition to this one along the corridor that may be of interest, just so you kind of know, like, how everything's happening along the whole corridor. And then I'll just very briefly mention the High Speed Rail project that you probably all have heard of a lot about. So the main objectives for the Caltrain Business Plan, the primary one that we've been working on in the recent months is the development of a long-range service vision. And that's basically to determine how many trains we want to be running in the future and what configuration that takes. The planning horizon for that planning effort is between now and 2040. And as part of that, we examined three scenarios, which was a baseline: growth, moderate growth, and high-growth scenarios in terms of what kind of service vision we want to have. So just this past October, the JPB Board adopted the long-range service vision, which was based on the moderate growth scenario, which is kind of the mid-range scenario, which accommodates 12 trains per hour per direction at the peak. So that would be the maximum number of trains you would see running through the corridor for this scenario. Of those 12, eight would be Caltrain and four would be for High Speed Rail. One of the other main objectives for the Business Plan is to determine which infrastructure upgrades are necessary to accommodate all this growth, which obviously grade separations is a big part of that. And that work is still in progress, but there is lots of information on the Caltrain Business website on that too, in terms of what infrastructure we're looking at, at caltrain2040.org. In addition to passing the moderate growth scenario, the JPB Board also gave direction to continue planning for a, quote, "potential higher-growth level of service as well as potential new regional and mega-regional connections." So instead of, if the region decides they need to accommodate more service in the future, they could go as high as 16 trains per hour, up from the 12 trains that are currently now Caltrain policy. So they want to just leave the space open for that to happen potentially in the future. If that scenario ever comes to pass, you would have 12 Caltrain or potentially other rail services plus the four High Speed Rail trains per hour per direction. And then just in terms, if that higher-growth level of service ever comes about, there's a potential for a need for a four-track section rather than two tracks today through the city of San Bruno. Just kind of want to quickly drill down into what the service vision that's been adopted means for the San Bruno, city of San Bruno. Currently, we have 56 trains stopping at the San Bruno station today. The adopted moderate-growth service vision would increase that up to 116, which is more than twice the service you get today. And also, we're looking at ridership that would be well above double of today. Additional benefits would be, you'd see an increase in speed. So for example, travel times between San Bruno and San Jose would be a savings of 10 minutes, or up to San Francisco savings of four minutes. So more service and a little bit faster service as well. So that was, what I just talked about was the amount of trains that would actually stop in the city, you know, with the new service vision. But in addition to the trains that stop, you would have additional stops, and city manager Grogan had mentioned, you know, up to 398 trains. So that's the amount of trains would actually pass through San Bruno, which of 116 trains would actually stop at San Bruno. So you're looking at a very high level of train traffic, you know, with the currently adopted service vision. So just wanted to make that clear. And if the region ever decides to go to a higher level of service, that could go as high as 478 trains per day, in total, for the whole day. And then just kind of a similar statistic, but just for the peak number of trains. So during peak hour service, we see 10 trains an hour. And then in the future, with the currently adopted moderate-growth service, you'd see it go up to 24 trains per hour. And then if we ever go to high growth, that could go as high as 32 trains at a peak hour. So again, lots of trains coming through, which, you know, obviously makes, you know, with grade crossings, that makes it a challenge to, you know, in terms of the traffic issues and whatnot, which will be talked about more later in the presentation. And so what does that mean in terms of gate downtimes, which is when the crossbars come down and block the intersection so cars can't go because a train's about to go through? So currently, as of today, we have about 10 minutes of every hour where you'll see crossbars down blocking traffic. With the current policy that's adopted, that would almost double it to 19 minutes an hour. And then if we ever go to a higher-growth scenario, you would end up at, you know, 24 minutes out of area every hour, which gets very significant. So it's a very big deal, you know, in terms of traffic issues when you get to that level. So essentially, trains are going to be passing through San Bruno every few minutes as we grow this corridor train service. So that's kind of my quick summary of the Caltrain Business Plan and what it means from terms of, like, service passing in through the city of San Bruno. I just kind of want to quickly go through what other cities are doing in terms of grade separation projects. There's actually a very large interest in grade separation projects up and down the corridor now because cities are aware of what's happening in terms of the anticipated levels of train service. So it's become a big deal. So there's every, most cities are engaged in some sort of process or another at various stages of development. So I just have a, I'm just going to quickly run through them. San Francisco has two great crossings that they want to eliminate with a tunnel project that they're pursuing in their city. Then there's the Linden-Scott, and we're at a, the project study phase, which is kind of like a feasibility level study, and we're, you know, in the middle of that. Broadway and Burlingame is currently actually getting close to completing their environmental work and their 35% design. So they're pretty far advanced in their project beyond this study here. 25th Avenue is actually under construction in San Mateo, so that's kind of its own thing now. It's not really in the queue for things. It's got a full funding package, and that's moving forward and under construction. Many of you have seen that. In Redwood City, they're looking at, they've just started a few months ago with their project study, which is the same kind of study you're doing here, but they're, you know, you've been going much, quite a bit longer than they have in terms of where they're at with that. And then the last one that's actually in San Mateo County, given that these things kind of get funded county by county in the current arrangement, is Menlo Park. And they just apparently, they just released their project study report on the website. So they're pretty much wrapped up with theirs at this point. So, and then I won't go into the others. The rest are from Santa Clara County down, and they, they're at more of the early stage except Mountain View, they're more into the environmental stage of things. So that's basically a lot of projects happening in the corridor, just to be aware of, in terms of when you're figuring out how to proceed with your project going forward. And then the California High Speed Rail project, just a very quick update, it's at the project level environmental clearance stage for the San Francisco to San Jose section. And just on September 17th, they actually chose, preferred alternative that, and so they're going to be kind of clearing that, and that includes, you know, where they want to locate the maintenance facility. And interestingly enough, there's no passing tracks that they're going to, for High Speed Rail, but that's separate from the Caltrain issue in terms of passing tracks. So that's moving forward as well. And I think I will pass it on to, back to Mike Cotto. Thank you.
Okay. So the city has been getting asked a lot recently, why build a grade separation? And, you know, Daniel just gave us a whole lot of reasons in the form of a whole lot of trains. And so why build a grade separation? Well, it's to protect the city of San Bruno, its residents and its neighborhoods from the impact of all those trains. And the impacts, you know, range from safety concerns with that grade crossings, with congestion that can occur near the crossing as a result of the gate being down a significant amount of the time, and also noise impacts. Currently, you know, trains have to sound their horn as they pass through our crossing at Scott Street, and so a lot more trains, there's a lot more horns going off. So this is some additional information about what we will see when all those trains arrive. This is a, from the traffic study that is technically still not finalized, but these are some results that are coming out that we have seen already from the study. And what we have here on the left is an indication of what the level of service will be at a number of intersections around the crossing, well, both crossings. South Linden Avenue is near the top of that figure. Scott Street is in the middle of that figure, and the dots down at the bottom are San Bruno Avenue at Huntington and San Bruno Avenue at San Mateo, so you can kind of get oriented to what's there. All those dots are green, and that's, left side is what is reflective of today's condition, so today's sort of number of cars, today's number of trains. And the green means that, you know, it's operating pretty well. Go over to the right-hand side of this. That's what we think is going to be happening in the future when we talk about the number of cars and also the number of trains going through the area. And if we do not build grade separations at South Linden and at Scott, you can see that we've got some red dots there, and, you know, that's an indication that we have some serious congestion occurring at those intersections. This is some additional information coming out that we have about queue lengths, or in other words, how far back cars are going to be backed up at some of these locations. This is for Herman Street and Scott, near our crossing there. On the left, again, is existing conditions, so some queuing there. The red lines indicate the length of the queues. And then on the right side of this is the projection for the future near Scott Street, and you can see that we start to have some very long queues extending down that intersection towards the bottom. On the right is the Huntington and Herman intersection. And then, you know, again, further up as well north of the crossing, the queue gets a little longer. Then we're going on, just to show you, this is what we think will happen at Linden. Again, on the left, that's the sort of the existing queue lengths, and on the right, what we think it might look like in the future. And all the, this is a result of the crossing at Linden. You can see that, you know, those red lines extend down San Mateo Avenue into San Bruno and down near the Scott Street and San Mateo Avenue intersection. So what do we do about all of that? Well, the city is, or, well, the project development team is evaluating, again, the three options that were mentioned earlier. Option A, no grade separation, we could allow that to happen. Option B is to do the grade separation for pedestrians and bicycles. And option C is, again, the full grade separation for all modes of travel. And we'll dig into those three options now. So option A, no grade separation. That photo on the bottom is Scott Street as it is now, and essentially, option A would be to leave this exactly as it is. And so, next slide, please. So the crossing would remain open to all modes of travel, but we'd see no safety improvements from the grade separation. There'd be no mitigation of the congestion effects from the gates being down, and there would be, you know, no mitigation of the noise. Option B is the pedestrian and bike overcrossing or undercrossing, and these are, bottom of these are some photos of examples of that. The one on the left is actually from Portland, Oregon. That's a pedestrian overcrossing. And the one on the right is from the, sorry, the Palo Alto area. So option B, in this case, the pedestrians and bicycles would be able to cross the tracks, but motor vehicles would not. So we do expect, of course, motor vehicle traffic would be diverted. Overall, congestion levels are better than if we were to not do anything, and we'll show you some slides about that a little later. It does eliminate the conflicts between the trains and the other modes of traffic. And so we would see, you know, expect to see safety benefits from that. And when we do a grade separation, the trains are no longer required to sound their horns. And this is a very early conceptual plan for what a pedestrian overpass or underpass might look like. I would say, don't focus too much on this because there's a lot of work to be done on this, but the main point we wanted to make with this slide was just, you know, although option C will have a number of impacts to a number, a lot of properties, including residential properties. Option B, we do expect there could be some property impacts just immediately there at the crossing. It's not a residential property, but there is some potential. We would need to acquire some of that land in order to be able to construct the pedestrian overpass and/or underpass. I want to make that very clear because I'm not sure that we made that completely clear in the past. So I just want to make sure we get that out there, that there could be the need to acquire a little bit of property immediately near the crossing there, but it is not a residential property. Okay, so some more traffic information. This is a similar comparison. In this slide, we have option A, which is if we were not going to grade separate Scott. This does include a grade separation at South Linden, because regardless of what we do, we do expect South San Francisco will move forward with their portion of the project. So, and then on the right hand of this is the option B, where we do the bike and ped, overcrossing or undercrossing. And you can see that if we do not grade separate Scott, again, we still have those red dots near the crossing, and there is also one at Herman and Huntington Avenue. If you go over and if we do the ped and bike, we prevent the cars from going across, then we get a lot of green dots near Scott Street. The price we pay is the traffic diverts, and you can see that the, if you look at the bottom of both of these slides, on the left, San Bruno Avenue, the dots are yellow, on the right, they're orange, so they do get a little worse from that. And also up at South Linden, their crossing would suffer from some of that diversion. But overall, you know, we judge this to be a better overall condition because we don't have all those red dots. And I would also want to point out that the traffic consultant has identified some other things we could do, such as optimizing signal timing, possibly doing other types of projects to add capacity at those intersections on San Bruno that might be able to help us to turn those dots back to yellow. And that would be some stuff that we'd have to, you know, look at more closely in the future if we choose to do option B. All right, and last option, option C, we do a full grade separation for all modes, so either the cars would go under or the cars would go over the tracks. On the bottom left is a photo of our very own San Bruno Avenue grade separation project, where the trains go over. And on the right is one from South San Francisco. I mean, that road that goes over is much larger than Scott, so, you know, ours wouldn't look quite like that, but. Option C, we would have the crossing open to all modes of travel. There would be no motor vehicle diversions. It would eliminate the conflicts between the trains and the other modes of traffic, so we do get the safety improvements. The trains would no longer have to sound their horns. However, the big negative, of course, is that it results in the property impacts. So property impacts, why do we get them? And basically, this slide helps illustrate that. On the top would be, you know, the existing condition where the road crosses the train tracks at the same level, the road is at roughly the same level as all the homes. If we were to do, for example, at the bottom, we raise the train tracks up, we lower the road some to get under, you can see how the road elevation changes, and that house on the left, maybe not so bad, it has an impact, but we might be able to just do some modifications to the driveway. However, as you get closer to the crossing, that elevation difference becomes very large, and this is where we're talking about, you know, we probably cannot maintain a driveway connection, and so the property would likely be, have to be acquired by the city and whoever's there be displaced. This is, I believe, the notorious map that has everybody here. Worst-case scenario, this just shows, you know, what some of the, what the area that would be potentially affected by option C could be. All those dots are driveway locations that would suffer some form of impact from trying to build this form of grade separation. We don't really know where the line is between the properties that would be acquired versus the ones that would just require driveway modifications. That would be something that would take a lot more detailed work to get to. So, you know, right now, we don't have that number, but 69 potential properties, driveway impacts. Okay, so switching gears, finally, to last part of our presentation, to talk about what have we done in order to increase our community engagement. So prior to our second community meeting, which occurred on August 28th, city staff did go door-to-door in the neighborhood. We canvassed, I would say, most of the Fifth Edition neighborhood. We didn't get to the park that's just south of 380, but everything north of 380 in the Fifth Edition was canvassed. We went once. If we did not speak with somebody directly face-to-face at the door, we left the door hanger. And then we went back to those homes a second time on a weekend, and again, if we didn't speak with somebody, we left another door hanger. And then prior to the actual meeting, we sent out some postcards, there were some social media blasts, Caltrain helped out by doing a press release. Announcements were posted on the city's webpage in various forms. We had an email contact list from previous contacts with the public, so we sent emails to those people. And an announcement was made at a city council meeting that occurred right before our August 28th meeting. Okay, so what kind of feedback have we been getting? At the community meeting on August 28th, the people who were there were allowed to participate in a activity where they could indicate their preference for the three options. So over on the right of this, you can see the options, A, B, and C. We gave the people different dots depending on where they said they were from, and so we can see a little bit of who voted how. So the first line there is if the person was from the Fifth Edition and in the property impact zone, so in that shaded area on the map we showed you earlier, that's that first line. So three of those residents voted for A, and two put their dots on B. So three of those residents voted for A, and two put their dots on B. If they were in the Fifth Edition but not within the property impact zones, those dots were split, eight for A, eight for B. There were three, sorry, four other people there who were from just the rest of San Bruno in general, and two of those people put their dots on A, one put it on B, and one put it on C. So the totals for San Bruno residents are at the, are in that next row, 13 for A, 11 for B, one for C. There was one person who was not a San Bruno resident who also received the dot and put it on the board, and they had theirs in the A column. And then just sort of a lot of other stuff we've been hearing from the community, and I'll run through these. One, we have been told that we do still need to continue to improve our notification process. Some residents have expressed concern about emergency service access in the event Scott Street were closed, so if option B were chosen. You know, city staff has, or public work staff has conferred with both police and fire on this. You know, they are here. One of the concerns we heard was that the residents actually did want to potentially hear directly from the departments and not from public works about this. So we do have people from the two departments who could answer questions about this later. I would just, I would say, as just a quick summary, the fire department has said that they typically will not use Scott Street as an emergency response route because of the potential for delays caused by the gate being down. The police department has said that they will use Scott Street at times to do response route, as part of their response routes. So if we were to close it, it would cause them to have to change some of their response routes. They do believe that would increase some of response times to certain parts of the city near the crossing. But they also said that their response times would still fall within acceptable ranges by industry standard. And I guess if, you know, if we want to get more into that, we can perhaps ask representatives from those departments to speak a little more later. So more things we heard from the public. There were some skepticism about our traffic projections that we showed in the traffic studies or on the slides about the traffic studies. There were some people who said that, you know, why can't we do a grade separation that allows the cars to go through but would not affect the properties nearby? And, you know, this is a, unfortunately, we have a number of constraints on our project, the biggest ones being the presence of 380 and the presence of a creek to the north of the Linden, South Linden Avenue crossing, that essentially constrain our ability to raise and lower the tracks as it goes through this area. And so it just isn't possible for us to raise or lower the trains enough to go completely over under the roads and leave the roads where they are. So that's why we're not talking about those as options right now. So there was concern about safety at the pedestrian and bike crossing. I think this is basically centered around, you know, the having to walk through a tunnel at night, and also whether or not, you know, this would be a place where homeless people would congregate. There were some people who were suggesting that we look at options for opening other crossings in the area, and specifically, there was a suggestion that we could open a pedestrian and bike crossing at Tanforan Avenue, which is mostly actually in South San Francisco. The border of San Bruno is right at Tanforan. But this would be something that has been suggested. There was concern about maintenance in the area, and this was both for should we build anything and also just actually for the crossing in general as it is today. There was concern about construction impacts when we, if we were to build something. There were, of course, plenty of questions and concerns raised about the property impacts associated with option C. There were questions about cost and where the funding would come from. There were people who told us that they were in favor of reducing the horn noise. And then just sort of a general summary, support is fairly evenly split, as far as we can tell, between, I know we don't know, we don't have any scientific polls on this, but, you know, as far as we can tell, support is pretty evenly split between options A and B. Those who support option A have been telling us that they don't believe there's a need to do anything, and that they would like to keep the crossing open to cars. Those people who have spoken to, who indicated support for option B, like the reduction in the noise. They actually would like to separate the area on the west of the tracks from the area on the east of the tracks. This is related to the auto businesses that are on the east side there who frequently park cars all along Herman Street, on the west side of the tracks. And there is, and these people who support option B have frequently told me that they just don't feel that it's all that important to keep the crossing open to cars. And then option C, other than the one dot that was on the board at the, that exercise that we held at the community meeting, the second community meeting, that's the only support we've seen for option C. There has also been a petition submitted to the city. 105 residents signed the petition, and the petition was in opposition to option C. And the points that were made on the petition were that these residents were opposed to the displacement of elderly residents near the crossing. They considered option C to be too radical and unnecessary. They believed option C would destroy the neighborhood, and they believed option C is cost prohibitive. And so with that, I will formally present you with staff's recommendation. Staff is recommending that option B should be studied further by the project development team. And just to reiterate, project B is the one that will close Scott Street to vehicles and build a pedestrian and bicycle overpass or underpass. And now we're prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. City manager, anything to add? No? Okay. Yes, no? Oh, okay. All right. So what I'd like to, we have three recommendations. Staff has recommended option B, not C. So, hold on, please. And if you could let us get with, so we can get the movie, the meeting continue. So just for disclosure, I did go, thanks with Phil, to Bay Shore Circle Park and spoke to some residents because obviously there was a concern, and the petition alluded to maybe a definite or potential. And so anyway, we tried to go out and communicate to folks there. We had about, you said, Phil, about 45 or folks or so. So I appreciate those folks that came on a Saturday. So what I want to do, and with the council's permission, is I will tell you right now, because I think this is what I was asked quite a bit, it was, A, who makes this decision? To my knowledge, and staff will correct me, it is the city council and the city of San Bruno who gives direction to the council on this. It is not an outside entity that will say it's A, B, or C. Is that correct?
That is true. Other agencies have approval authority over the project, but as far as choosing the design option, that is the city council.
Okay, because that was a question that was raised. And then, second, because when we have speakers, I want them to maybe be able to focus on what's important and what's before us. So I want to see if there's consensus, but for me personally, I am not in favor of option C. And I want to see if the council is up to the same, or if there's anyone that wishes to keep it on the table to discuss it further in dialogue. Is there anybody who wants to keep option C? Mr. Salazar, Vice Mayor.
No.
Davis.
No.
Mr. Medina.
No.
Okay, so what you've heard before you tonight is that staff, nor all of the city council, is looking at, talking about, or considering option C. So what we are going to go forward, and when your speaker, when the speakers, I'm going to see how many we have, it'll be for option A or B is what you might want to focus your comments toward, because obviously, that's going to have what you've heard from staff. So it's A or B really is what's on the table. What I'd like to know is, I know we have several speaker cards. I think nine, to be exact.
We have seven, but I do have two that did not identify what item they want to speak on.
Okay, so potentially up to nine. And I don't know if everyone did put in a speaker card. So by a show of hands, and this is for time limit purposes, may I see how many persons wish to speak on the grades up tonight, please? And if you could hold it up just for a couple of minutes, that would be helpful. I count slow. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay, so I still have about the nine, so that's fine. So with those, what we'd like to do is call those folks up now, understand you'll have three minutes to speak. There is lights on, on the podium. It'll go yellow, which will give you about 30 seconds. And then red means you've hit the three minutes. The reason I'm doing, do the three minutes is because obviously, we only have about nine or 10. If we had had 30 or 40, as I explained, too, we would probably have to reduce that time. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open it to the public in case you wish to, need to get home or what have you. So Melissa.
First speaker is John Miller, followed by Ruby Ross.
If you can go to the, but you're going to need to go to the mic, and when your name's called, maybe you can make your way over to, to keep it flowing.
John Miller, I live at 2520 Princeton Drive in San Bruno. And I do have a question. I'd like to know if any homes will be taken during option B.
Okay, and what we're going to do is get the questions and comments, and then we'll respond at the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Ruby Ross, followed by Dennis King.
Do I get started back at the three?
Yes.
I got a PhD in research design from UC Berkeley, and it doesn't take a PhD to say that if you cut off one of our three accesses in and out of our neighborhood, that your little traffic projections do not reflect reality, quite frankly. Because we have three ways in and out of our neighborhood. We've got that Linden crossing, we've got Scott, and we go underneath 380. And that's all we have. If you cut off one of those, you cut off one-third of our access in and out of our neighborhood. Given your projections about all those other delays that you're projecting that if we don't do anything, how the hell is the fire department or the police department supposed to get into our neighborhood if they need to get into our neighborhood when we have one-third access less coming into our neighborhood? So it's nice that only now, as we're banding about proposition, you know, option B, we're going, oh, and by the way, we may be taking some of your houses anyway because we've got some designs that we need to look at. So option B, when it was originally presented, was presented under the basis that no houses would be taken. And now we're hearing today that that's not necessarily the truth. Because if you're building an underpass or an overpass, you may be taking some properties. Bottom line is, leave our neighborhood alone.
Folks, folks, folks.
You know, we're doing fine the way we are.
You're taking into the speaker's time when you do that.
We're doing fine the way we are, and even if our traffic obviously does increase, we are not a high-density neighborhood. Most of our, most of the homes in our neighborhood are not rentals, they're not apartments, they are owned by the working poor. We value our neighborhood, and we become very, very proactive when anything comes along that threatens our neighborhood. Because we have fought long to maintain this neighborhood, to support each other, and the last thing we want is to see our neighborhood getting screwed around by people who don't live in our neighborhood and think you know what's best for our neighborhood. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ruby. Okay, folks, folks, I'm going to ask you not to applaud, because it is, it is hard. Some people are, have a, obviously, some folks are okay with speaking in front of crowds and some are not. So if we refrain from any applause, or if you agree or disagree with the speaker, and then we can do, I'll applause for all at the end. Next speaker, please.
Dennis King, followed by Philip Fitting.
Mr. King.
I like what she said. And I want to thank the mayor for his time and his efforts. Every question I asked, he got back to me. I couldn't ask for more. Very professional, and I appreciate that. Because I, when he didn't know a question, he says, I'll get back to you. And he called the next day and say, this is what's up. I've lived on this block for 50 years, and the congestion is not any more now than it was 50 years ago. And to think that it's going to be worse in the future, I don't think so. Because if everybody notices, people are not gravitating to having their own car anymore. Kids nowadays, they take Uber, they take Lyft, they're not worried about it. The noise, the noise doesn't bother people. They're just like, the noise doesn't bother us in San Bruno with the airplanes. It's, we're used to it. It's no big deal. Now, here Caltrain say, oh, it's not going to cost anything, or we hit San Bruno, it doesn't cost anything, but they want to raise the sales tax by 1%. That's going to be a problem. So, and it does say in your, in your website that we're not going to take any houses for B, and now they come back and say, well, we might have to take some houses. If you take people's houses, make no mistake about it, you're going to destroy their businesses, you're going to make them homeless. Be a very bad thing. And that, that little intersection, it just services that little area, the Fifth District, the Business District, it's not a thoroughfare to 101, it's not a thoroughfare to 280. It's fine, just leave it alone. It all comes down to this. Pedestrians have to wait 45 seconds. And in the future, they might have to wait 90 seconds. They're not from here. If they have to wait 45 seconds, I'm okay with that. They have to wait 90 seconds, I'm okay with that. I don't think they want to ride up a big thing, cross over and go down. I think they'd be fine just waiting 45 seconds and be done with it. City San Bruno says on their website, it's a city with a heart, and I appreciate you guys taking C off the, off the calendar, but I think we should just leave it alone. Thank you for talking.
Thank you, Mr. King. Next speaker, please.
Philip Fitting, followed by Casey Kessinger.
As Mr. Fitting's coming to the podium, thank you, sir, is, I just want to, just for everybody, because it's come up two or three times now, just for clarification. Mr. Cato, city manager?
Sure.
So, hold on.
Sure.
So what the residents are asking is, first, as was said, there was none, zero on A, zero on B. Now, staff's recommendation is B, and now the word homes, which, to clarify, Mr. Cato said, no residential homes. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. What you did say was that there was potentially part of a commercial property. Can you be more specific to the best of your ability, either manager, Mr. Cato?
The properties that would potentially need to be acquired would be actually part of Railroad Place, which we've heard a little bit about already tonight. And then also, there is currently a lot there on the corner just to the east of that, which is, it's like fenced in and used as a parking lot right now. So it's not a residential property, it's not a home. It's currently just an open lot. And so it would be those two properties that we think we may have to take parts of that in order to construct a pedestrian overpass or underpass for option B.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, please, Mr. Fitting.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and city council. Now, did I understand correctly? I have to hear it about three different times, but is C completely off the table with the city council now?
Mr. Fitting, if you didn't hear, I asked each council member independently, individually, and they all said, yes, C is not being considered. Staff is not recommending C. Correct?
Well, thank you very much, and I'm happy that no one will lose their homes. And that's, you know, all the stuff that I had written down is all on C, so.
But, but I, I do want to, I do want to say, it's good to see you getting around as well as you are.
Thank you so much.
From your surgery.
Okay.
Casey Kessinger, followed by Angelo Cruzis.
That's my landlord, and I've been there for almost 30 years. And first, I'd like to say thank you to him and everybody that's helping in our community. Second is, being that I've lived there pretty much my entire life, that in intersection has always been kind of horrible for people who live there. A lot of people who aren't from that intersection have no clue that you don't stop on the tracks. Though there's signs all over the place, I think my biggest concern would be changing anything is going to make traffic worse. It's already bad. Second, is there any way we could look at a stoplight? Something as simple as a stoplight on the Herman Scott Street side and one on the alternate side, Montgomery area and Scott as well? Mainly because I feel like a stoplight would help alleviate some of that congestion, and maybe a stoplight can also, I don't, I don't know traffic, but if a stoplight can also put a stop in when trains are coming, so when the bars go down. Unfortunately, for the first time in the entire time I've grown up there, only one person has been hit on that intersection of the train tracks months ago now. Sad, but at the same time, that person chose to go around the cross where it was already down. If there was a way that no one could cross through, or if there was a stoplight basically saying, don't cross through, don't even think about crossing through, it may alleviate some of that traffic, it may not impose on any of our homes. I am the second building from that corner. The first building from that corner also is someone I've known my entire life, someone that they'll be affected, obviously, if there's any type of grade separation, even if it is Plan B. So if possible, just leave it alone and maybe try to give us a stoplight. And also lights, we have no lights in that intersection where people crossing. My dad has My dad has two small dogs. My dad, in his mid-70s, he'll hate me for saying this, it's hard, he won't say it, but it's hard to cross the street for cars to actually see you. I've yelled at cars, I've waved my hands, I've done those things like, slow down, there's children in this neighborhood. Day or night, people run that stoplight. Police officers used to wa, used to wait there and used to actually, you know, pull people over. I don't see that as much, and also, that's taking out from the community what police officers could already be doing on the side, let alone just putting a stoplight and some lights could probably make it a lot easier for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Angelo Cruzes, followed by Kim Hoffman.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm a resident of San Bruno since 2015, and homeowner since a decade ago. I live 200 feet from the Caltrain tracks, about a blog from Scott Avenue, the main topic for tonight. To state again, the obvious, the Scott project touches personally. It will impact me, my future, my family. I have a very strong vested interest to see San Bruno be a safe place, a clean place, a fair place for everyone. I need to give credit when credit is due. Over the past 10 years, I've seen my area become clean, new paved roads, bush maintained, responsive police, but with it also the hurdles of a rapidly growing metropolitan area, such as more traffic, more train noise, airplane noise, people noise, it's just inevitable. It's gonna happen. We're in a very popular area, we're in a good area. More cars is not the answer, that's my personal belief, to just practically, you know, this, a growing rapidly area, shortage of housing. I do see public transportation as a positive agenda to pursue and invest. Keeping that all in mind, I do support option B. I urge my neighbors, my community, to listen to facts rather than explosive fear-mangering that I see and hear spreading on our neighborhood. It's very counterproductive. We need to hear facts, needs to be, there needs to be more information in behalf of the city, more openly. Expecting nothing, not having an outlook on the future or change is dangerous and counterproductive. Doing nothing is negligent. But I do see some real losers on this project, on this Scott grade separation. All those body shops, all those mechanic shops using Herman Avenue as their personal parking lot impacting our residential area. Those are the real losers, and I'm not sorry for that. And I did hear someone say something about cutting access for emergency services into our neighborhood, and I do have a question about that. Since we are cutting one entrance into our area, is there a consideration to maybe opening that area into Huntington Avenue? Maybe, maybe that'll be into consideration to mitigate that concern, and access from Huntington Avenue into that neighborhood? And, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Kim Hoffman, followed by Hang Song Chi.
Well, first of all, I'm not a public speaker, and I get very nervous.
No problem.
I've lived at 72 Scott Street since I was six months old, and the thought of losing my house kind of scared me, because I've lived there with my mom my whole life, with Casey and Phil. So the idea that you guys aren't gonna take away our house has made me a little bit calmer. The, the only concern that I would have would be the construction of building this particular underway or walk overway of the train tracks. How would that already affect these streets that are full of cars, as I said, parking from the mechanics buildings or just the, in general, of the narrowness of San Bruno streets? How would that already affect an intersection that you guys already want to do stuff with? How would that kind of construction affect people who live especially here on that corner? That would be my only really big concern.
Thank you very much. You did great.
Hang Song Chi, followed by Drew.
We've been handed a no on option C, but I think we took care of that. On the other side, I know he was circulating in the room, but I want you to know what we received as well, and it's this document that some of you folks also have in your hand.
Okay, so, hi, everyone. So my name is Hang Song. I live in Scott Street, and I have a master of architecture degree in front USC, and also I'm a professional architectural designer. I participated in a lot of large projects, for instance, 2022 Beijing Olympic, and also the SF Grand Height in, in the, in the airport. I also did a two billion project in New Stand, in Istanbul, which is New Stanford Hospital. So today I want to say something. And first of all, I, according to my analysis, I believe, so, we need to do something for our community, so, but not the, those options, but a better desire. How to desire to improve my, our community is important. Because of the increase of the noise, we need to find a way to reduce it. So I believe if we can build a sound wall between the street, the railway and the street will be helpful, build a sound wall. And also, I support the desire to build an overpassing cross. The reason is, underpass and also some enclosed bridge will raise the homeless issue, because anything with a shelter will have this problem. So that's why, in my presentation board, I made it as an open, open to sky, so there's no, no shelter. This is all for volunteers, so it is, I just want to contribute something for our community. And there was one resident mentioned that, so, if we block, if we block the Scott Street, it will block the ambulance and police car. I don't agree with it, because according to my mapping analysis, Kaiser Center and also the, the police station is in the west side of our community, but not the east side. So it will not influence tho, those cars to come to our community. So I believe we, we need a, a better community. And I attend the previous meeting, and I saw a lot of good design in option C, but there's only some cheap design in option B. So that's why I, I believe we need a, a good design, but not an option for our community. So it is all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Drew, followed by Mr. Alessna.
Drew?
Good evening, members of the council, mayor, staff, residents. So I went to the August meeting, and I learned a lot just there, and I drove around the neighborhood after. And I just want to zoom out slightly, because the focus keeps being on Scott, and I want to pop up ever so slightly. And why? Because if I go, if you go north at Tanforan, the street's on both sides. And maybe that connects, maybe that works for the neighborhood, I'm not sure. But when you look at the whole grade step, you don't need many homes, I don't even know if you need any homes, like all the elevation, it fits so many of the criteria here that were driving just connectivity to this neighborhood. I call it like option D. It could work for the bike ped, too. It's like, why build a tunnel under the tracks? Wait till the tracks get above or way below? And I just, you know, it's like, the other reason for this is, South San Francisco has a major project planned for 101. They're gonna add another interchange, and it's gonna connect to Linden just north of this area. Like, I just feel like the people of San Bruno need connectivity across this. I'm not saying option C absolutely at all when I say that. It's just, why not look at Tanforan? A day of engineering work can quickly flush out how viable that is, whether it's worth spending any more time or effort. But I just look, and how tight everything's jammed in, everything's Scott, Scott, Scott. To me, it's everything in San Bruno's city limits is fair game. How to improve the access, how to make that area better, what adds value to that area, what listens to the residents in that area? And I just, why it's only Scott? Why isn't it that whole corridor, and what could be done to make it better for everyone involved there? And so I kind of considered option D. I sent it in, I said, hey, just take a quick look at that. I've been going to other grade step meetings up and down the peninsula, and other cities are trying to connect both sides of the track. They're trying to do things. And a lot of the issues I've heard here, you know, about the underneath and all the traffic and emergency vehicles, that's why I'm struggling. Why can't we pop up ever so slightly and look, if you move it north, does that, does that solve the problems in so many different ways? I don't know. I'm not claiming it does. But to me, as a taxpayer for the county, we're gonna spend $200 million here. Isn't it worth to see if we can do something better to add value, that just makes things better and stuff? I just struggle. There's so much, we want more money, more money for this, and it's like, can we pop up a little bit above Scott Boulevard and see that whole corridor? Is there any other places it might be better to do something? Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Next speaker.
Mr. Alessna, followed by Carmen Flores.
Ms. Alessa, sir.
I live at 88 Scott Street, right there. You know, Scott and Herman. Now, if they was to take my house away, I, I'd be homeless. I couldn't pay the tax on the next house, you know? I raised four children on that house. I lived there 60 years, and two went to Cappuccino, two went to Crespo, you know? And I've been there 60 years, I hear the train. I don't see so many trains go by, you know? These guys are talking about this much trains, that much trains. I don't hear it, I'm right there. You know? Anyway, you know? But try to take fifth addition away from us. Now, Caltrain, want to take, if they're gonna take houses away from us, give us a break. You know, the law took my wife away from me. Now, only get few more years to live. Let me leave me in my house. You know? Way, 60 years ago, I bought it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reaffirm, option C is off the table, but I appreciate, and I was reminiscing that I coached his daughter in softball, so, we had to let him speak and make sure he was listened to. Any other speaker cards?
That's the last speaker for tonight.
Okay. Folks, okay, okay. So, so folks, I, I try to, I try to figure out on time, so that's why I'm always asking, and I'm asking for a show of hands. So, we've gone through the room. If you want to speak at this time, I'm gonna say two minutes, because, you know, I want to make sure we can get to deliberation. So if you're gonna speak, you need to come to the podium now. It'll be for two minutes, and I'm gonna keep you to two minutes, please, and I'll be as respectful as I can, but please be respectful. People want to kind of get some information.
Okay, so I guess I'm gonna be short one minute. Basically, I just want full transparency and full accountability with the public. I'm gonna refer to this little map here, the, the red area, which is the parking lot. That belongs to AT&amp;T. And I didn't know anything about this until tonight. I'm wondering how come it wasn't mentioned in the prior meetings. And also, I'd like to know if there's gonna be a sweetheart deal when that property is gonna be bought. I would like to know why the other parcels, which includes mine, why that isn't part of the deal. Second of all, I just want the public to be fully informed, because I keep seeing safety as one of the top reasons why we're talking about all this. As far as I know, there's only been one fatality, at least within the past 10 years. And I don't know of any car collisions in that area. So safety, to me, is being sold as the number one priority, which I think is probably a lower priority. Because I think the plan is contingent on what the city of South San Francisco wants to do. I know option C is off the table, but do we really have an option A? Because if we're gonna be spending all this money, why spend it if there's not gonna be elimination of option B? And then 20 seconds left. City Manager Jovan Grogan, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I've called you in the past, left you a message with your reception.
Sir, sir, keep to the topic, please, of the grade separation.
This is all about accountability and transparency. If I, if I call an official, a city official, and leave a message, two weeks later is not a reasonable time.
Sam, you made that clear as far as your concern, and the city manager said, and we got your information from the clerk. Thank you.
I, I did not originally put in a comment card, because I'm a resident of Bel Air, not of this neighborhood, and I, I do respect that the opinion of the people who live directly adjacent to it count for more in this issue. I will say, I, I was a Cal, regular Caltrain commuter up to the city for quite a few years when I lived in San Mateo. And having been a Caltrain commuter, I think anything that you do with grade separations that reduces the chance of tragedies occurring, I mean, which, which they then, you know, throw off, you know, obviously terrible for the people involved in them, and also create, you know, small issues for thousands and thousands of people. If you've ever been trapped on a Caltrain for like two hours while they investigate an incident, it's no fun. So I spent about five years living in a neighborhood that had only one road in and out, the Los Prados neighborhood of San Mateo, and so I hear the discussion of, you know, reducing it from three to two. I think I, I do trust the engineers to examine, you know, sort of, what are the flows on the different roads, because not all the roads are equal, and one that's got a train track on it is probably going to be fewer daily trips already. In the Bel Air neighborhood, there is a plaque by our grade crossing, grade undercrossing on Angus, for a teenager who was killed there. And I mean, here you go, one, one fatality in 10 years, I mean, you know, I mean, that's one too many. I mean, I think taking, you know, even if it is infrequent, you should take the safety issues seriously. The, my main reason for, for commenting was, I did want to know whether the model for option B accounts for the possibility of adding two more tracks there, because, I mean, if we have to rebuild it to expand the right-of-way, it seems like we ought to be planning for that in advance. So it's actually my main question.
Thank you. Next person for two minutes, please.
So, a previous, someone who stood up here previously mentioned that this intersection is a hazard. I mentioned in the previous meeting, and I will mention it again, this intersection is a hazard. Why are we fighting so hard to keep it? I, I've, I hear the arguments from people over here supporting option A, but I, I can't help but feel that we're fighting over something that isn't needed. Also, the, the impact of noise isn't something that you just have to worry about as someone living there. If, if noise levels goes up, it actually affects our property values. So you have to consider it from that angle as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this the last person to speak from the public, then?
Hi, my name is Evelyn Campos, and I live in the corner of Scott Street. And I, you know, I was so wonder, because I was the person who will receive the most impact in that street, right? And when, and I want to say, I hope that you keep your promise then not going to take none of our houses, because, you know, for me, then I have, I bought that house in 1996, and I've been sleeping in that corner for almost 23 years. And to tell you the truth, the noise do not bother me at all. And, and, you know, it's like, why, why you are wonder about the noise? And the other thing is then, now, then I live in that corner, there is less trains running during the night, in the middle of the night, even in the morning, and the whole day. Because, you know, when they run more is when the San Francisco Giants play. That's the only, you know, season, then I can tell you the truth, I can count the trains that they pass by. And, you know, I am happy in that corner, and I keep so many people trying to buy me that corner, and I can tell you, I clean three houses every day to pay my mortgage. And I don't think it's fair, then, you know, the Caltrain, they wants to put their nose in our properties. And because most of my neighbors, they are seniors. I, I live by myself, you know, I pay my mortgage by myself, and I be wonder about them, most, because they are seniors, and we are, like everyone say, we are a working people living in that street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, I know, as I've said, she's the last, two people get up. So I'm trying to be really understanding, we've made several announcements. So the gentleman in the suit, and this lady, Rose, and then that's it, okay? So please, you've already spoke, sir. Sir, you, you have, you- Sir, you, you have, you've had your, you just had two minutes, sir. So, they're getting two. So, sir, sir, you've had your opportunity to speak. Please, let's be respectful of the speakers. We have the last two folks that are at the podium, and for two minutes. Thank you.
I actually just have two questions. One is that you're talking about the safety of San Bruno Avenue in San Mateo, that retrograde or whatever for that you did for Caltrans, and the safety in there and the traffic. There's a lot of traffic, and it doesn't look that safe, and it's not lighted, so I wanna question to see that if you're gonna, how you're gonna take care of that in, around Scott Street. And then also about the flooding? There's a lot of flooding there, and as I was driving by, there's a lot of traffic there. So, I'm really concerned about, when you're saying that this is gonna reduce traffic, but in San, San Bruno Avenue and San Mateo Avenue, there's a lot of traffic. Okay?
Thank you, Russ. Final, sir?
Richard Fitting. I thought this would be a missed opportunity if we didn't recognize the civic engagement on this, and how proud everyone should be in this room for the role that they played. I wanted to say that I'm extremely proud of my father, Phil Fitting. Thank you.
Well, and that's best served to be the last to bring that up. And I, and I will say, Phil and I have talked a few times, and so, yes, been very impressed with him, too. All right, folks, that's the end of the public comment. Any comments from manager, from the commentary, or questions that we've had, or before we bring it to council?
Sure. Again, Jovan Grogan, city manager. Mayor, you asked us to address some of the comments, and so we've been taking notes, and I will try to address most, if not all. And so, the first comments that we heard around, will any homes be taken with option B? And I think we clarified that a little while ago. The conceptual design has one potential property being taken. It is not a residential property. It is currently a lot that is used as a parking lot. Sort of around that, there was a question about would the design of option B allow for four tracking, so the addition of two additional tracks? And that it does, and that's partly why we're anticipating that we would need to take that property. And a taking does mean compensation. It is not a taking without compensation, and there is an eminent domain process, and so that, that should be made clear. But again, option B would not involve the taking of any properties as shown there. The next question was, or comment was about the reduction of vehicular access around option B. And so, it was stated that there's currently three ways to enter the neighborhood by vehicles, taking away one, obviously reduces that to two, and so are there any mitigations? And, and the answer to that is, we do not know yet, but we are in what's called the planned development phase, where we are deciding essentially what road to go down. And should the city council decide to go down the road of option B, the next phase would be a design of option B and environmental work, which will look at mitigations. And so, there will be impacts, and there, there are oftentimes mitigations to projects. And so, we would look at that, and there could potentially be opening up additional vehicular access to the community. We don't know what those are now. A number have been talked about. People have mentioned, well, can you open up an additional access and by opening up Huntington at, at one of the various streets? And that is something that, that can be looked at. But that is essentially the next phase of this project, once we, once we decide what path we're going down. And again, there will likely be no grade separation if the council chooses option B for the next seven to 10 years. There's a very long road to go through the approval processes, the environmental clearances, and to compete for federal and state dollars to construct this. And as Caltrain mentioned, that there are a number of other projects, both in our county and in Santa Clara County, that are competing for funds. And so, in many ways, this is sort of a rush to get shovel-ready, so we can compete for those federal grants to install the final design. There was a question about lighting and flooding. Absolutely, no matter what is constructed, we will look at those. And during this meeting, I ran out to talk to staff, because we were having flooding at our existing grade step, and we had to make sure Caltrain came out and maintained their pumps to clear that roadway, and it is, it is back open now. But absolutely, that is an issue that we need to address ongoing at that intersection and, and at others. There was questions about a sound wall and potential other ways to construct the, a grade separation, and that will all be looked at, 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 again, the next phase, as we launch into design, should the city council choose that direction. And safety was mentioned. Safety is absolutely important. It's not just the experiences in the past, but it's also proactively planning for the future. And we had the presentation from Caltrain, and, and we know that traffic is going to increase on the corridor, and so, planning for the safety of the future is something that is vested with, with the city council. But it's safety, it's noise, and it's traffic. And so, that really concludes my remarks, and staff is here to answer any additional questions. And I do not envy the decision that the city council has. Managing change and making decisions that will impact a community is something you're vested with, and it's a very important decision, and it's not one that I know you take lightly.
I think a note, I might have had this person brought up about a streetlight. I know there was just lights in general in the intersection or in that same, but is a streetlight a possibility? Would we find ourselves if going down option B and they go to two tracks? What would, could that cause, I mean, four, adding two? But could that cause?
Right, I'm sorry, I talked about that. Under option B, there is enough room for, for tracks. A streetlight is essentially option A, with just upgrading the stop sign to a, a, a streetlight. It is not a significant increase in safety. It does not prevent the additional noise, nor does it stop the gate downtimes from increasing significantly, as we saw in the Caltrain presentation.
Thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna turn it to council for questions, comments? Nobody has any questions or comments?
I'll go first.
Laura? Thank you.
So, this, I guess, would be for Caltrans. There was no mention of, what are the plans in San Mateo for like Terrace Villa, Villa Terrace, Santinés? There's a number of other streets along the, along the peninsula that are exact same as Scott Street, where they either go into a residential property, but there are, it is railroad crossing. Is there plans in other cities that will close in those, those crosswalks or train, train intersections?
Well, so, the ones I went over earlier were the ones that we know of, where there's a formal planning process. There are conversations up and down the corridor for other intersections, but those are the ones we know of where they've actually initiated a formal planning process. So, I'm not sure, the ones you mentioned, I'm not exactly sure where the conversations are related to those.
Okay.
We can check for you.
And then the, the number that you gave, 398 trains in a 24-hour period, that's a 20-year projection?
Well, that would be when you fully reach the maximum number of trains running for the moderate growth scenario that, which was adopted. So, obviously, growth of service would increase kind of like step by step, up to 2040. I'm not exactly sure when we'd actually reach, what year before 2040 would reach that, but they're, they're gonna do more analysis on that in the next phases of study.
And I, you know, I'm sure we all in this room get stopped at a train crossing where we've gotta wait for the train to go by, but I don't think it's 10 minutes. So, is there, what's the, is there an average time? Is the minimum a couple minutes to, up to 10 minutes? Is that what we're talking about?
I mean, it can vary, depending on, it, sometimes it's just how the trains come together, which can really mess with the lights. I actually cross Charleston intersection in Palo Alto, and you can wait at least 10 minutes sometimes in the morning, or during rush hour usually, but off-peak, you're not gonna usually wait that long.
Mm-hmm. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So, I would just say that, you know, I've heard the presentation, I was also in attendance at the August 28th presentation, so thank you to staff for the presentation and the details tonight. You know, Scott Street's an interesting neighborhood, because it, it, there's definitely the railroad tracks, a division between a residential neighborhood and an industrial part, or a, you say, the autos and whatnot on the other side of the street. So, I appreciate some of the feedback, something I didn't even thought about, is, you know, crossing those railroad, putting a stop on those railroad tracks actually prevents a lot of that traffic coming into your neighborhood and, and taking up the parking, which I didn't even thought about either. But I think that everybody, and I could probably speak for everybody here, that the goal is that in the long-term plan, 20 years out, 30 years out, there will be an increase in train traffic. So, we have a decision here tonight to say, well, what do you wanna do with that long-term plan? Do you wanna just say, just leave it the way it is, and let us residents to drive into that area? And I drive that area, I've got a mechanic that's in that area that I head down to, and I cut right through Scott Street. Do you want to stop the residents and be in convenience on a regular basis? You know, you could be stopped 30 minutes out of every hour? Or do you wanna do something to increase that? I think the other thing we haven't really talked about is, South City will, is a good question, will South City be making plans? Has a decision been made to do a crossing overpass at Linden?
So, this project is being planned in conjunction with South City. It is not being driven by South City, and what South City chooses and what we choose matters, because there's only about 1,800 feet in between the two railroad crossings. So, if we were gonna choose to elevate our track, they would need to make an elevation change to their track. And so, it is important what we decide, but it is not, the two are not interdependent on each other.
Okay. I don't, and I can't voice an opinion for South City, but let's just say, South City does increase their crossing, that actually increases or improves the traffic on the Scott Street neighborhood, because you have no, no waiting now on the, on Linden Avenue exit. And tell me if I'm wrong, isn't it less than a half a mile between Scott Street and Linden? So, that to me says, if I live in the neighborhood, I still have pretty good access. They're gonna, good chances are gonna improve the Linden, and they, we close off Scott Street, I still have the ability to access the other side by just quickly getting over to the Linden a half a mile away. I think I timed it, it was a matter of, I don't know, 25 seconds from the Linden intersection to the Scott Street intersection. The other thing is, is, and I, and I would be concerned if I live in the neighborhood, I call 911, and I need a fire department to show up, is there gonna be a good response time? And, you know, San Bruno Fire Station, I wanna refer to 5051 on El Camino, is gonna head down San Bruno Avenue and make a left turn to head into your neighborhood on Huntington, or either cross San Bruno Avenue and make a left turn on the San Mateo Avenue. So, I don't see the fire department being, really being affected by the closure of Scott Street. And I think that, for me, would be number one. That if I live in the neighborhood, and, you know, someone's having a medical emergency, that we get good response time. So, I think closing it off is not going to affect you. The police department's pretty close to the area, so I think you're gonna get their good response time, but they can be in other areas. I definitely did not support Measure C. I just can't imagine to see the number of residents take homes taken away. We're not there yet. Maybe there's a different council sitting up here in 20 years, it's gonna say, you know what, this is a huge impact, things have changed, and I don't know. But today, I do not see that. I have a hard time, and I'll wait to hear my other colleagues and hear what they have to say, I have a hard time doing anything right now, because I think, and I think it was the gentleman by the name of Drew, that said, can we step back a little bit and really see what's going on with the neighborhood? There are a lot of changes, changes happening in, in South San Francisco, new development happening in South San Francisco, hopefully new development at Tanfran. So, what does that mean for the whole neighborhood, and what are some other options? So, I think I have a hard time making a decision one way or the other, but I'd like to maybe pull back and, and take a bigger picture. Those are my comments.
Other comments or questions from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Morning.
Clearly, no one up here wants to take any home, and that's great. Option C is off the table. But the increase in train traffic is gonna happen. And with that increase, there's gonna be, it'll impact the safety of everyone. And any one person passing is gonna be a tragedy. So, we can all agree on that. I did not get, hear an answer, city manager, from Drew's question about the outer view, and maybe that was discussed at a previous meeting regarding a grade separation at Tanfran? So, are we able to kind of answer that question, that that was analyzed at some point?
So, the option to move off Scott Street and take a look at Tanfran was not analyzed. We are discussing and have been studying what to do about Scott Street. Should the city council want to entertain a modification to Scott Street, and then potentially look for some additional modification elsewhere? I don't think that that's precluded. What I would say is, it's really a separate project. I think you need to take a look at Scott Street, given that it is an existing crossing, given the impacts for, in the, in the, in the business plan, and decide what is the venue for Scott Street? And then should the city council want to look at other crossings that would be grade separated elsewhere? I think that's a separate effort. I would hesitate to go down the road and say, yes, we're gonna look at a, a separate crossing, and it's at Tanfran. I think that's a wider view. I know we've had a member of the public proffer that suggestion, but I think that's a larger effort to say, where do we want additional railroad crossings in San Bruno, and how do we attain that? And I think that, that's a worthwhile effort. I could probably, Caltrain may be able to discuss that in addition. I know that the dollars that are out there have really been prioritized for improving existing crossings, and so to make another crossing, given the, the cost of these, how well you would compete with the federal and state funds, knowing that those funds have been prioritized to improve safety and deal with impact at existing crossings? My gut would be, you would be lower on the priority. But I really think they're two separate projects.
Understood. Can we have?
I generally agree with, with the city manager's characterization of that, yeah. I mean, you, you do have an option to maybe look at scope again in the next phase of development, where you go to like environmental and preliminary engineering, could think about adding things to the project then, as well. So, there may be a possibility there.
Sure. So, it's, it's a great question, and I appreciate that, and that's, that's why I'm just passing it along. It's not that I'm saying we should do that, it's just a question that was an answer for the public. So, that's good to know that we could ask, but my, my gut feeling from looking at the map just recently, it's probably gonna be fine there at Scott, 'cause there's a lot of buildings right there at Tanfran that would be impacted. So, it's my understanding, city manager, that there is a traffic study underway?
There was a traffic study commissioned, and it is currently in draft stage. The report is not complete, but what you did see in the presentation are images, and all of the LOS, Level of Service Impacts, come from that traffic study. And so, the council did have, and the public did have the benefit of what some of those preliminary impacts are. It is also worth noting that a traffic study at this stage of, of planned development is, is not required. We actually did it just to see if vehicular traffic was closed, what, what the impact would be. Would it, would it essentially stay the same, get a little bit worse, or get better? And we know the answer to that now. Should the city council decide to proceed down option B, which would have the roadway closed to vehicular traffic, the next phase and the sequel process, the environmental impact process, will do a very, very detailed traffic study that will, as I mentioned before, look at potential mitigations and impacts, and other spin-off projects that could help alleviate the, the negative level of service impacts that closing Scott Street to vehicular traffic would create. But that's really sort of the, the next phase of this project.
Great. And I guess what, what that traffic study will be able to tell us is that not all the streets in and out of the area are equal, that most people would take the other streets, and we'll be able to verify that with that traffic study. Yet, as Councilwoman Davis mentioned, the, the elimination of another access point is important. It affects people's lives, and looking at how we could potentially provide another entry point off of Huntington is something that could come later, later on during the design and the impact, to mitigate the impacts of closing that one street. The last thing I was, wanted to comment on is, is to making sure that the lighting that is currently at Scott Street that is currently at Scott Street apparently isn't sufficient based on some of our public's observations. And separately of what we do tonight, I'm hoping that we can go ahead and look into that and see if, how poorly that intersection is lit. And if needed, we would put a light there to increase the, to increase the lighting so people can be seen better as they're exiting and working in that, moving through that area. So I, I'll just come out and just say it. I think that option B is my preferred option based on the traffic that will be coming with the trains. And having a separation of the train traffic and pedestrians and bicyclists is very important. And I do appreciate the designs provided by, and I couldn't pronounce his name, but the effort that went into creating the sound wall, that was very interesting. So I'll leave it with that for now.
Thank you. Michael?
Chair, thank you. So I think it's great that the community came out and forced tonight to express their opinions and stand up for their neighborhood. So congratulations to all of you for having the courage and the ambition to come out here and speak to us. We definitely take your comments to heart when you come out. And I know I can speak for all my colleagues when I say that your opinions do matter to us. But one comment that was made regarding one death being too many. That, I think, really sums up why we're even considering this and why this conversation came about. Because not just in San Bruno, but over all of the great crossings that had great crossings that exist on the peninsula and into the next county, there have been several deaths. Some intentional, some accidental. But it is a concern. And Rico and I sit on the local policymaker group for Caltrain. And we've been hearing for years now about their business plan and how aggressively they want to grow Caltrain. And we hear the summary here and you think about, okay, so eight trains, 12 trains. Doesn't sound all that intimidating. But the frequency of those trains is gonna increase dramatically. And with electrification, those trains are gonna be coming through faster. And they're gonna be coming through a lot, a lot more frequently. And talking about, you know, looking at the bigger picture, you know, we're seeing the summary here. But this conversation started years ago. And I remember in a study session we had long, long ago, a few years back, when they were looking at all of the options. We were looking at what happens at different segments as we approach the South San Francisco grade separation. And they actually have the land so that they can do a grade separation. And so, early on, they were leaning toward that option and we looked at what we can do. And one of the things that we had to consider was as trains approach, you have to consider how fast they can go up and how fast they can come down. And as we electrify them, there's even a taller footprint now because there's towers overhead that are gonna power these trains. And it really limited what we could do. With the trains already coming up in South City and having to make it underneath 380 before they approach the next grade separation, there really wasn't a whole lot of options. And so that's why we have the options that we're seeing today. And this is really the culmination of a lot of work, a lot of studying and a lot of analysis. A lot of that work has been done. And so what we have now are the options that are really the ones that are more plausible. I don't think the do-nothing option really does justice to addressing the safety issues that are, they're gonna be more apparent. And as the City Manager said, this process is gonna be a long, long process. And we're gonna learn a lot more as we move forward. There's gonna be other opportunities like these to analyze where we're going, to really see what those traffic impacts are, to really understand what the impacts to the neighborhood are gonna be with that South City crossing just half a mile or so up the road. There will be some relief coming from that. And there are a lot of other traffic things that we need to look at on a global basis that might help alleviate some of those orange dots that we saw on the map. So with that, I definitely think that we should support option B and start the study. And again, that doesn't mean that it's gonna happen, but it means that we are gonna pursue the option. We're gonna look at this as our best solution at the time and start working toward, you know, a safer crossing there. So those are my comments.
Irene?
Thank you. My colleagues have pretty much covered it. I agree that, first of all, thank you all for coming. We wish you would come more often. And it's kind of, gets kind of lonely up here sometimes. But thank you for voicing your opinions. I agree that doing nothing is, it may be fine now. But in five or six years or 10 years, when the trains start coming more and more and faster and faster, you'll be back here saying, how come you didn't do anything? So we're trying to look forward and chart the safest passage with the least amount of impact to your neighborhood. We all agree that we don't want any homes taken. We all understand and all deeply appreciate how hard it is to have a home in San Bruno, anywhere in the San Francisco Bay area, actually. But we know that, we heard you. We would say the same things ourselves if we lived there. So, but again, doing nothing, I don't think is gonna make you all happy so, or safer. So I would also support B.
And for myself, when I was just down there the other day and I was standing with someone, I won't mention who because maybe they don't want to know that I was there and we were talking. But there were a couple of the residents on Scott and we were just talking. And I also was standing out there to watch, as I have a few times, the crossing. So you have pedestrians that are almost not crossing on the section that they're supposed to cross. They cross on the other section. Which I know it's a short distance, but it doesn't take a lot. The traffic as it flows there, if the traffic going north or south perceived that there's nobody coming from Montgomery, they roll. They roll right through it. And then I see when they get in the middle and they're turning. And I watched that for quite a while. And I've done this now three days at different times. And from what I was told, that's how it is. They're not, people aren't patient. People aren't cautious. I know one person was saying, I tell the kids, you know, please, if it takes time, it doesn't matter. But the sadness of it is, is what I watched, that wasn't the case. Whether they lived in the neighborhood, I don't know. They could have just been parking their cars on Herman and crossing the tracks. So I don't believe in the do-nothing approach, myself as well. I think I also heard from some of the residents of Bay Shore Circle was, you know, why can't you open it up somewhere else too? Even have an easier access that gets you to Huntington or somewhere nearby San Bruno Avenue as another outlet, so we don't have to go all the way around. So I see option B as going toward the future as far as safety and the train traffic. As Michael said, what they're expecting to put on the trains doesn't seem a lot now. But they are going moderate to high and they wanted to go high. And I think most of the community said it was a little too much, too fast. But they still have an option to go to that direction. But I also think on the safety element, with the caveat that we really look at the big picture and maybe find another access point, which some of the residents have talked to me about, so that they have another area to get out that's convenient and gets to the thoroughway, easier to get to the freeway, those type of things. So for myself, I'm looking at option B. So is there any other questions or comments from council? This is basically a provide direction to staff. So I've heard from four council members, option B. I've heard from one council member, not a variance in, or correct me, to A or B at this time. So at this point, direction by council is to option, is option B. Direction, I'm sorry, direction to staff. And direction to staff also is to eliminate option C, period. Option C is off the table, as we already discussed earlier. But that is council's direction to staff. Does staff have or need additional information?
No, I think we're, I think we're clear. We don't need a roll call motion. But we will proceed with option B and option C is off the table.
Okay, so what we're going to also do, first of all, we're gonna take a couple minutes so everybody can kind of get to, get out in a good fashion. So, but before you leave, thank you for being here. And I want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving.